Good evening, my name is Sean Igo. I'm the acting chairman of the Yarmouth zoning board of appeals. We'll now convene the March 24th, 2022 meeting of the Yarmouth zoning board of appeals. As required by general law, chapter 38, sections 18 through 25 in pursuit to chapter 20, the acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternate public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on channel 18 or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notices provided necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You may request to participate by using the raise hand function. If a committee member is remote, okay. We will begin by taking a roll call for quorum. Well, I see Mr. DeYoung's name. He is not present tonight. I will cancel him off the list. All right. Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Frapery?
Yeah.
Ms. Omer? And I'm here, that's present. How come I didn't? How come I didn't check up? One, two, three. Oh, I know what. I didn't check off. Jay, there we go. Having a quorum present, we will open the meeting. The, we have three matters on our agenda tonight. The first matter is petition 4943, Adriana Perionis of 10 Turtleback Road, Essex, Massachusetts. The property location is 82 Harbor Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R-25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per one, section 104.3.2 and/or a variance per section 203.5 to construct a 14 by 14 shade pergola in the rear and side set, within the rear and side setbacks. Good evening, is Ms. Perionis, Perionis with us tonight?
I think it's audio.
Let me get my packet out here. Your mic is muted. Could you unmute your, unmute your mic, please? Lower left-hand corner, hit that little unmute button. There you go.
Okay.
We can hear you.
All right, thank you.
And could you tell us your name for the record?
Adriana Perianos.
Perianos, okay. And can you tell us a little bit about what you want to do here?
Yeah, so basically, we want to just put a, a shade pergola. It's a four column with the slat on top on the back corner of our patio where we have our seating area.
All right, okay. And let me just check here. So as I understand it, you're looking for relief on the rear side, side and the rear setback, is that correct?
Yes, the rear and the side. So the rear is just about, about 17 feet to the rear where the woodlands are. And the side setback is on the, the conservation land on that end. And I did go ahead and get the approval from, from Kelly Grant at Conservation beforehand to make sure it was, you know, okay with their side thing of, you know, to, to approve that. And she did sign, and I do have those documents with you there.
Okay, we actually have a, we have a memo which I will read into the record. And this is to the Board of Appeals from Kelly Grant, Conservation Administrator. Regarding petition 4943, 82 Harbor Road, the Conservation Office granted it an administrative approval for a 14 by 14 shade pergola within an existing patio area. The approval was for an update to a previously approved plan issued under order conditions SE 83-2274. The approved plan is titled Proposed Pergola of 82 Harbor Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. Matthew C. Costa, Land Surveyor, Cape and Islands Engineering, dated 2/8/22. Okay. Did you have anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
Uh, nope. It was pretty straightforward.
Okay. Well, I'm going to begin by asking the board if they have any questions. Ms. Omer, do you have any questions?
I do have one question. I was just curious, is there any way, is that the only place that you want to put it? Because the seating already exists.
Yeah, that's basically the only part of the patio where we do have the seating. Around the back of the house is more, it's very narrow, so we, we don't have any seating there. That's mostly just for, you know, the walking around that way. So it is the side, the back side yard is the most out of the way and the most, I guess it's the most square footage to be able to put that there and not be, you know, right on top of the house.
Anything else? Jay, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions this time.
Dick, do you have any questions?
So this considered a new, new structure. In other words, we're one foot from the lot line. Was there any communication attempt with the, to the Conservation Trust, which is actually the owner of the land next door? It's not the Conservation Commission.
No, not with the, with the trust, no. Because this plan was under the guidance of Conservation Commission, I just start, you know, that's who I started with. I assumed it was, you know, had to get her approvals for buffer and all that.
Okay. And it's a new structure, so that's why we need a variance on this, right?
According to the building department, they consider it a structure.
It's considered a structure. I know it's not much of a structure.
Right, well.
You can see through it, which is nice.
Yeah.
But, but it, I guess it is a structure. And so I think it's a variance we're looking for. So there's a certain criteria that we need to meet to, to grant a variance. And I'm, I might have some trouble with some of the, meeting some of the criteria for the variance, to be honest with you. I'm also, even though it's a small structure and it's, you know, tucked off and there's conservation land next door anyways, it's still a structure. And I always worry about, um, setting precedent with allowing structures to be one foot from our lot line. And, you know, especially where, you know, there might be some other options. I know this is understandably the most convenient and, and nicer option for you, but it's, you know, it's still a structure. It needs to be able to meet the criteria, I think, for variance. And I think it does.
Does it, does it make a difference if it is movable? Because it's not, it is something that will, you know, if needed, ever needed to be moved. It's not a permanent, like, it doesn't have a foundation, it doesn't have, you know, say if we needed to remove the patio or something had to be done back there, it is something that is easily moved, I guess, is how you can describe it. It will go in, you know, the patio pavers will go around it, and it does go into the ground to keep it from blowing away. But it is something that can be moved quite easily. It's not, you know, because it's all open, it's not something that's permanent, I guess. That, maybe that's the word I'm looking for. It's not a permanent structure.
Okay, I think that makes it better. And I'll, I'll listen to see what Sean has to say, but I have some, some reservations. I mean, I know it's a minor structure, but, and if this was a really, you know, if this was a large shed, for instance, I'd be looking at it differently, I'm sure, as well. But I'm, I'm never thrilled about anything being one foot from a lot line, to be honest with you.
I agree with your concerns, actually. Dick, however, I, I do think the petitioner makes a good point that this is a little bit different in that you can literally just pull it right out of the ground, just kind of move it over. We could, we could put that in the decision that we found that it was a portable structure and one that isn't considered permanent in nature, but can be moved.
I think that would be helpful in terms of making the distinction between other, other things that may come before us that might be.
Yeah.
More of a structure.
Yeah, understood.
I, I do share your, your concerns about allowing structures to be built so close to the lot line. But this is a pretty unique situation. I think in terms of the variance criteria, looking at her lot, it appears that this really is one of the only places to put this. She does have a narrow backyard. She indicated to us through representation that it's really not feasible to put it in the back, nor the front. I'm not sure about the other corner, but, which might end up on a close to a lot line over there as well. We do have the conservation land, the Conservation Trust land that is next door, so there would not be any intrusion into any neighbor on that side. So I think that makes a big difference. I don't think I could support it if there was a house there and we were right up against a neighbor's yard.
Yeah.
But I, I would suggest that were we to grant any relief tonight, that we indicate that this is a, a portable structure, one that can be moved, and that we would not necessarily consider this permanent in nature, but would allow it as variance relief for the purposes of maintaining a pergola. So that's my thought.
Yeah, I, I, and I agree with everything you said, except for possibly, you know, the variance criteria, again, as to, well, this is the only place we can put it. Well, just because that's the only place you can put it, doesn't mean you should have it.
No, I guess I, I would suggest that perhaps it's due to the shape of the lot. And.
Well, that's, I mean, our, our reason when we made the patio there, the largest area to be able to put our, our table and our, you know, our seating area was, it was away from, you know, we built it on that end because it is away from the neighbors. And, you know, there is a large tree on to, if you're looking at the plan with the house, you know, facing the house, and the patio is to the right, there is a very large tree there that does kind of offer a little bit of coverage, so it doesn't, you know, blocks the structure view a little bit, I guess you could call it. But that is basically our only seating area on the whole patio where we have our table and we have space for table and seating.
Is that, is that patio already existing?
Yes.
What if we granted a variance personal to the petitioner and the variance lapses, lapses upon your ceasing to own the property? And whoever buys it subsequent to you, if they want to maintain that pergola, needs to come back to this board for relief.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. May I inquire as to your thoughts on that, board members?
I personally don't have, given the structure, I don't really have a problem with it, especially since it's trust land right next door and that can be built on. So I didn't have a problem. They actually have the patio, already goes up right to the lot line. And they didn't have a problem with that when it was built, so.
On patios, they don't.
Patios.
They can run those right up there, but once you put a structure above it, then it.
Understood.
Yeah.
But I don't have a particular problem.
What do you think, Megan?
I don't have any concerns with it.
Okay, all right. Dick, you have concerns?
I'd be comfortable with your, I mean, your idea.
Okay, so. So what we would do is we would grant variance that's personal to the petitioner. Such, such variance would lapse when you cease to own the house.
Okay.
I would put it in the decision that a subsequent purchaser of your home would have to come back and we would listen to their petition.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That back, who knows, maybe someone who buys your house doesn't want to maintain it.
Yeah, that's.
But they could always come back and see us. And I'm gonna put in the decision that the structure is portable in nature. Not necessarily a permanent structure.
That's good.
Okay.
That okay with everybody? Anybody prepared to make a motion?
So moved.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, yeah, I did.
Whoops.
Have you got something, he can beat up the thrower at me if I get out of line here. Okay. Is there anybody in our audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Is there anybody in our audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. Do you have anybody on Zoom? Anybody's hands raised? Okay, seeing none, okay. We'll close the meeting for public comment. And again, I believe I had a motion from you, Mr. Martin. I know I have these little things right here, don't I? Motion was made, seconded, we're gonna do a roll call vote. What say you, Ms. Omer?
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye passage unanimously. All right, there's a 20-day appeal period, once the petition, the decision is filed with the town clerk. Now, the guy who has to write that, so don't call up the town clerk's office next week because you won't get it, it's probably not going to be out for a couple of weeks. Truth be told.
Okay.
After the 20 days elapses, excuse me, once it's filed with the town clerk, then 20 days must elapse. It's a technical appeal period. I don't think anybody's gonna appeal, but you never know. After that, you need to come to see our assistant, get a copy of the decision, take it over to the registry of deeds and record it, and then bring proof of that recording back to our assistant, okay?
Okay, yep.
Do you have any questions?
Nope, thank you very much.
Okay, good luck, nice talking.
Thank you, yeah, bye-bye.
Me, what did I do with my thing here? Alrighty, let's see, where are we at? I've already lost my agenda. Yeah, sure. Okay, okay. Now Steve feels. The next petition on our list is petition number 4944, Jeffrey and Maureen Stewart of 91 Hunter Road, Uxbridge, Mass, Uxbridge, Mass. The property location is 33 and 37 Railroad Ave, Yarmouthport, Massachusetts. It's in an R-40 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per section 104.3.5, sub-paragraph 2, to combine lots 33 and 37. The applicant also requests a special permit per section 407-2 and use table, section 202.5810, to create a family, family-related accessory apartment. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure would, thank you. My name is Paul Tardif, I'm an attorney in Yarmouthport, and I represent the petitioners, Jeff and Maureen Stewart. And as you indicated, they are the owners of the property, 33 and 37 Railroad Avenue in Yarmouthport. And we are seeking special permit pursuant to two different sections of the bylaw that really go together. One cannot be offered without the other, so I really think this is a good project that actually does incorporate them well, and I'll explain. The property shown on the plan here is actually two lots. Lot one is the larger of the two lots. So again, just to get your bearings, railroad, and then have a large lot here with one barn here, and there's another barn over here. And that, obviously detached, the property is in the R-40 zoning district, contains approximately 19,191 square feet of area. The second lot is a smaller lot over here, just this rectangle here. And that is improved with a one-story, single-family structure, two bedrooms and one bath, and it was constructed in approximately 1940, according to the Yarmouth accessory records. The lot contains about 7,300 square feet. And that property is served by a two-bedroom Title V septic system, which services the cottages, which I'm gonna be calling this. So this is really the only dwelling on the entire property right now with two barns. The proposal, as I said, is twofold. First, the petitioner wants to combine the lots into one lot using an 81X plan, which will erase that common lot line between the two and create one big lot. The resulting lot will be 26,531 square feet. Second, once that's done, the petitioner will construct a single-family dwelling on the lot, on this side of the lot, containing three bedrooms on two floors and a three-car garage. One of the existing barns, the one located here in the back, will remain. The other one will be removed, which is underneath the house, I mean, you can see they superimposed it over, so that'll be gone. Petitioner will then designate the existing cottage, this one, as the family-related accessory apartment in which their son Brayden Stewart will live. A family-related apartment affidavit has been completed and filed with the board. I filed that earlier this week. Speaking of this unit right here, if you've been by, you've seen it, it's, it's pretty small. The entire unit will contain 349 square feet of living area on one floor. There is a, an unfinished basement, which can only be accessed from the outside with a set of stairs, but even adding that, it's 320 feet, which would meet the definition of the bylaw. So I think we're gonna start with the accessory apartment criteria. Under 407.2, it will be a complete and separate housekeeping unit that functions independently from the primary single-family dwelling unit. There will only be one accessory apartment per the lot, obviously. The lot will have at least 10,000 square feet, in this case, once combined, it will have 26,000 and change. The accessory apartment will be designed so that the appearance of the building remains that of a one-family residence as much as possible, it already is there. The accessory apartment can be either located inside or detached, in this case, it will be detached, it's already there. It's gonna be clearly subordinate to the principal structure, which will be the new house being constructed. No larger than 800 square feet. I have submitted a plan to you with the floor plan for the cottage. I think you have that, it's just a one-pager, looks a little something like that. That has all of the calculations on it, but I don't think there's anyone that's gonna doubt that that's under, that's not over 800 feet, I should say. No accessory apartment was gonna be held in separate ownership, this will still be owned by the Stewards. So I, again, I think we meet all of the criteria under 407 for an accessory apartment, should we be able to combine the lots. I, I should also tell you that the structure that is there now, the cottage, meets all of the setbacks, the current setbacks for zoning. The new structure is gonna meet all the setbacks for all the zoning. The total combined lot coverage with those three buildings will still be at 12%, less than half of what's allowed. And then the other form of relief is under 104.3.5, and that's to basically put two lots together. So, you know, usually what we're doing is we're reconfiguring lots, maybe you have a little scrap piece that's left and it's a lot by itself, but it's unbuildable. We don't have that here, we're putting two lots together to make one. So under 104.3.52, under their criteria, we are gonna be reducing the number of lots from two to one. That's, that's subsection A. Subsection B says that it's not gonna increase any pre-existing non-conformity. In this case, we're making the lot more, more conforming, still not conforming to the 40,000, but better. We have two structures that all meet setbacks, building coverage, et cetera. And, and then part C, it doesn't really apply, it says if more than one adjoining vacant non-conforming lot is created, well, we're only creating one total anyway, so that doesn't apply. And then subsection D is the, is the catch-all, which basically says that the development and the use of the lot is not going to, is gonna be current with the future and the current development of the neighborhood and zoning district, not gonna be substantial detriment, contribute to undo the usual special permit criteria, which I believe in this case, I don't think anyone can argue that this would be detrimental to neighborhood effect, sections of the bylaw that encourage this. I think there are only two places in the bylaw, correct me if I'm wrong, that allow two dwelling units on one lot, unless you have twice the, the space, and this is one of them. So I think under the bylaw as a total, combined with, with both forms of relief, I think it's a great project. If you have any questions, happy to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stop with Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, you have any questions?
I guess my main question is, why? You've got an existing house on it, on a lot, and another lot that can be built with a, a new house. Why bother to do this at all?
There's a question about whether or not this lot has merged at all, going back. There's a lot of folklore on this lot, this, this little structure, this cottage being possibly transported closer from, or away from the railroad tracks, was part of possibly the railroad, being moved, another, has it across the street, up on the little hill, right on railroad, so, and then we started looking at some of the plans for, for these two lots, some have them separate, some have them together. And rather than go through all that, the Stewards want to keep the lot and have the family down, and right now.
I mean, I think it's a better, better circumstance, actually, it just.
It's great, yeah, works for them.
If I had the two lots, I would have kept the two lots personally, but, yeah. But no, I see no problem the, for a new house on the larger lot, and this being a, a separate family unit and so forth, I think works very nicely. I think the house looks beautiful, it's gonna be built, and I certainly have no issue with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Jay, do you have any questions?
Just a few comments, I think more than questions. When I first looked at this, I thought you were asking for the, the new house that was gonna be put on to be the accessory. I thought it was interesting that it was gonna be such a large accessory to go with the small.
Yeah, right.
Small one, but, but this makes more sense, and it does, it makes it less non-conforming by taking where the small lot was so close. So it does, it makes it less non-conforming, which is a good thing. And I think it's a really good use for the land in the area, it does, I think, improve the community and communities in the neighborhood. So I, I think it looks like a, a nice, a nice project.
Right, thank you.
Megan, any questions?
I do have some questions. I might have missed this somehow. On the petition, it says family-related accessory apartment, but on the fact sheet, it says single-family and affordable accessory?
On what sheet are you looking at?
On the fact sheet, on the back.
Oh, on the back, on the fact sheet of the, of your petition, of your application. Not on the legal notice. The legal notice is family-related.
Yeah, no, not affordable, sorry, yeah, never picked it up.
And then, it also says on there, it's aquifer protection overly district, yes, but on the plan, it says not a zone two.
The tag though?
I don't, yeah, I don't believe that's in the, I don't think that's in the APD. I think it's a little too far north, yeah.
I'm just curious about the septic, is there like a pump that goes from the smaller?
I think there's a separate system for this one, and there's gonna be a new system for this one, so I think there can be two separate systems. I don't, I don't know where the.
It's on the lot too, I didn't see.
This one you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I didn't, but I, I know it's there, so, yeah.
It's existing, that's why I think you don't see it.
Yeah, it's only serving one building, I guess, okay.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I think your presentation demonstrated that you met the criteria under the bylaw, not only 104.3.5, but also 407.2, and specifically sub-paragraphs one through nine. Excuse me, is there anybody in the audi, are you all done? Any more questions from the board? Is anybody in the audience? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor of this petition, seeing none? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in opposition to this petition, seeing none? Do you have anybody with their hands raised? None. Okay. We'll close the hearing and begin some discussion. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll move to, let's see, move to approved petition number four nine four four, as requested.
Okay. No conditions. Take it.
I, I don't, can't see any reason for any.
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Okay.
Current building looks like it looks newer than nineteen forty.
Shingles will get you.
The conductor's house.
It could have been a little ticket sales booth. I mean, it's small.
Ticket sales, really?
Possibly. I like that story. I'm going to go with it.
Yeah.
The two barns. Was there a house? Was there a house there originally, or?
On this one or this one?
No, on the big one. It's funny to have just the two barns.
Two garages. Yeah, it's funny. Yeah.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Frapery. Take a roll call. Any further discussion on the matter? Of the board? Hearing none? Okay. Mr. Martin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Ms. Homer?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. That's unanimous. May I expect a draft decision from you at your convenience?
Yep. You'll have it tomorrow.
Less than what, a hundred days?
No, no, we approve. You don't need the extension. We got you. Yeah, we'll take care of it.
If you could do that, and can you email it to me? You have my email address, I think.
You want, you want the criteria for both forms of relief spelled out, or do you want just that we've complied with section?
I think you're good. Whichever way you decide, fine. I think you clearly have demonstrated that you meet the criteria.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, let me clean up this mess here. All right. All right, our final petition tonight, everybody like to come on up, is petition number four nine four five, Cape Cod Hospital and Winterberry Solar LLC, wholly owned by Nexa Grid Inc. Property location at four thirty, thirty-four, and forty, Bayview Street, West Yarmouth, Mass. It is in the B one and R twenty-five zoning district. The applicant seeks to modify an existing special permit, number four seven one five, in order to construct carports for canopy-mounted solar panels over an existing Cape Cod Hospital parking lot, along with three ground-mounted equipment pads and utility poles. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. My name is Jeannie Campus. I'm an attorney at Nutter, McLennan &amp; Fish, here on behalf of the applicants. And with me tonight is my colleague, attorney Eliza Cox, Daniel Cerber of Nexa Grid, Michael Boxton, VP of Facilities for Cape Cod Healthcare. And I think Brian Yergesian, our project engineer, is attending remotely and can hopefully help with showing the plan for you all.
Okay.
We're here to talk about the properties at four thirty, thirty-four, and forty, Bayview Street. And we're here to modify a prior special permit issued for those properties in 2017. In a minute, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel Cerber of Nexa Grid, who's going to talk a bit about why this site makes sense for this project. And then I'll give a brief overview of the project, the modifications we seek to the prior special permit, and address some of the comments raised by various town departments. And after that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Daniel for quick then.
Hi, how do you do? Again, my name is Daniel Cerber. I'm the Development Director at Nexa Grid Inc. We specialize in, you know, sand pits and other non-performing assets and making them into solar facilities. So we're not big on tree cutting, so this is kind of our wheelhouse, parking lots, rooftops, landfills, sand pits. That's our business. This project, we came about by RFP that was issued by Cape Cod Health. We did win that bid, but this is a particularly good site for solar use for the reasons that has appropriate abutters to the, to the west. We have mostly industrial uses, equipment lots, contractor yards. To the south, there's property owned by the applicant, Cape Cod Health. To the east, it's wetlands, so no real abutters there. And to the north, it's also some Cape Cod Hospital property, along with some institutional uses. There's one residential lot that's all the way on the northwest corner. So we're only near a single residential lot, and we're set back pretty far from any public rights of ways. So this is not going to be particularly visible. We're not going to be adding any light that's not already there. It's an existing employee parking lot, so it's already a more or less well-lit for safety purposes facility. And from a planning perspective, this is a wonderful dual-use property. We're not affecting the underlying parking use, but allowing for the creation of solar energy, which adds additional income stream for Cape Cod Hospital, and furthers the state of Massachusetts' renewable energy goals without really taking up even, even parking spots. So that's why I think this is a great property for the use.
Thanks, Daniel. So as Daniel mentioned, the property is currently already improved with an employee parking lot for Cape Cod Hospital. The current configuration of that parking lot was approved by special permit four seven one five in 2017. The property exceeds six hundred thousand square feet in area. As Chairman, Chairman noted, it's in the B one and R twenty-five zoning districts. A portion of the site is also within the Zone Two Wellhead District, as well as the Yarmouth APD, the Aquifer Protection District. As Daniel mentioned, the easterly portions of the site are adjacent to some wetlands. We have been to the Conservation Commission and received a determination of non-applicability. And, you know, in total, there are twelve solar canopies proposed. They are all over the existing parking lot. There are also three concrete equipment pads, which will house two battery storage containers and two inverters. I think it's important to note that both the batteries and the inverters are located outside of the APD and of the Zone Two. And we have been before design review, we have been before site plan review. We've also met with the Building Commissioner to discuss any possible zoning relief. And the real reason why we're here is because of this existing special permit for the property. The proposed solar use itself is a Dover exempt use. The components of the solar canopies themselves comply with all dimensional and bulk requirements under the zoning bylaw. Additionally, as we've shown on the plans, we've identified a few trees from the 2017 plan that appear to be missing. I think about three. We're proposing to replace those. We've also identified roughly a dozen, maybe more, trees that are just simply unhealthy at this time. And although the solar canopies themselves don't affect those trees, we're proposing to replace them anyways. So there are five trees, I believe, on the westerly portion of the site that do have to be relocated due to the solar canopies, and we're just proposing to ship those five trees to the west. We've submitted a photo metrics plan, which I apologize for it being impossible to read on paper, but hopefully you had a chance to review it online. It shows that we are in full compliance with those provisions of the bylaw. And finally, no zoning relief is required under the APD provisions because these, the use is not a special permit use. And moreover, the batteries and inverters are located outside of the APD area.
You say it's not a special permit use?
No.
You're not looking for, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're not looking, to clarify, we are not looking for special permit relief for the use itself. It's a solar use that is a Dover-protected use, and so...
I do have a couple of questions about the structures. When you finish.
Okay. Yeah, so we're not here seeking relief for the use, and we're actually not here seeking relief for the structures in terms of, because they comply with the zoning bylaw, they comply with the setbacks, they comply with height requirements, all of those dimensional requirements. We are here, though, because the existing special permit decision from 2017 references, obviously, those 2017 plans. And with the new structures, we want it to reference, we want to modify it to reference the current plans. And also, there's an existing condition that no hazardous materials be contained on the site. We'd like to modify that to say that no hazardous materials will be stored within the APD portion of the site, because there are hazardous materials associated with the batteries. Which leads me to the town comments. We have been working with the Board of Health or in discussions with them since January about this. You know, we, we fully acknowledge and understand that we will have to comply with all applicable Board of Health regulations regarding hazardous materials and obtain any licenses or approvals that they require, and we're fully committed to doing that. I think for purposes of tonight, though, you know, in terms of zoning, there's nothing that, that should hold up the decision of this board from the Board of Health perspective. We will be working with them. We will be providing them any additional information they request. The one thing I did want to note is in the memorandum, and this is partially my fault, I gave this figure to Mr. Lawson, but it notes, it notes third, over thirty-nine thousand pounds of hazardous materials. And I just wanted to clarify, the figure is actually less than half of that. Some of the material, I think I mistakenly gave him the weight of the entire battery and not just the hazardous component. So we'll be talking with him. We're not, we're going to suggest that the manufacturer of the battery meet with him directly to discuss this and go over that. We understand too that the amount of hazardous materials is typical for a solar project of this size. There's nothing different about this particular project. And our understanding is that the amount of hazardous materials is roughly equivalent to about sixty electric vehicles. We've also reviewed the fire department's comments, and like the Board of Health, we, we will, we are fully committed to complying with any applicable fire code regulations. We will be seeking any permit that we need under those regulations, and we'll be working with them too. You know, for purposes of tonight, if the board is inclined, we would be agreeable to conditioning the modification of the special permit on us obtaining all the necessary approvals, especially from the Board of Health and Fire Department. And so with that, we would request that this board modify special permit four seven one five. The two conditions, condition number one relating to the plan set, and condition number three relating to the hazardous materials, limiting those only to the portions of the site outside the Aquifer Protection District. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I looked at the site plan review comment sheet. Now, you're asking for carports with solar panel arrays on top of it, correct?
Correct.
Well, my interpretation of a carport is it's a structure that stands alone regardless of the solar array above it. And so as such, these, in my judgment, would be accessory structures. Not have a primary structure on the property, nor do you have a primary structure that's associated with it, unless you're going to tell me the hospital is your primary structure.
No, I'm not going to tell you that. I think that your interpretation would render the use itself not allowed, which I think would be...
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. I mean, you could put up a standard solar array stand, which we have a lot of them around town. Of course, you'd have to eliminate your parking lot. But what you're asking us to do, and others may differ, but these, to me, are structures. They're carports. And this many carports in a commercial center, a commercial setting is not allowed under our bylaw, so you'd need a variance.
Again, I think my response to that would be that because solar is a protected use and the legislative intent is clear that it's encouraged, that would be, your reading of the bylaw would be an unreasonable regulation upon the solar use because it would effectively prohibit it.
I'm not addressing the solar panels. I'm not rendering an opinion on the solar panels at all.
The only purpose...
Rendering an opinion on the structures that you want to support them.
The structures are necessary for the solar. They don't serve any other purpose, quite frankly.
Well, you have them. You've represented them as carports.
I guess...
That's your, that's your word, not mine.
Daniel, maybe you could describe what they...
Sure. So...
You don't need I-beams, correct, to support car, to support solar panels?
Well, to bridge the gaps that we're looking for to conform with what the fire department is asking us. And additionally, we're taking great care to avoid removing in-lot trees, keeping light wells for those. So we do need light, we do need I-beams to create the height that's necessary to make this a true, dual-use project.
No, I see what you're trying to do, but the issue that I have here is those are structures, and they're not allowed under our bylaw.
I, I think, again, they're, they're not carports like a typical carport at someone's residential home. They are canopies that serve to house the solar panels themselves. And the structures, the canopies are required for the solar use. It's part of the solar energy system.
I'm just telling you what my interpretation that would be.
I will say that your Building Commissioner had a similar concern, and he found that the, the building kind of in the northwest portion of the lot was the primary structure.
And so you're suggesting that you can get relief. How many carports do you have?
We have twelve solar canopies.
How many carports are associated with those canopies? Looks to me like there's probably fifty, at least.
I'm not sure exactly what you're...
Cars that are parking underneath the canopy.
How many, how many parking spots are we covering?
How many parking spots are underneath the canopies? I'd say quite a bit.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting that a primary structure can support dozens of parking, of accessory structures?
I mean, again, my position is that the structures...
I know what your position is. You're relying on the Dover amendment.
We are, because the sole purpose of the canopies is to support the solar use. It's inherent with the use.
Well, I think that there is a, there's an alternative to support the solar arrays, and that's with a more standard array that is low to the ground.
Ground-mounted?
That is, that is ground-mounted. Okay, you, you could present that here, and that would be probably a more persuasive argument. You'd give up your parking lot, I think. What you're, what you're trying to do here is two things. Trying to have a solar array, and you're trying to have accessory structures to park your cars in, and not lose your parking.
It's, it's not a structure to enable parking of cars. The parking lot is for the parking of cars. The structure...
You couldn't have your solar arrays without the parking structures.
Exactly.
So they're parking structures.
They're not parked, they're solar structures.
I, I don't want to go back and forth here, because we, we could do this on...
Yeah.
I'm just telling you my interpretation. If you're looking for some type of relief tonight, I would vote against that because I don't think you qualify to modify the special permit, because I don't think that we would modify the special permit if you came in and said, "We want seventy-five structures to house our cars." That's the way I'm looking at it. You're looking for carports. I don't care about solar arrays. That's secondary to my concern. You're looking for all of this structure on the lot. Now, others may find that different, but if you came in here originally and said, "We want to have seventy-five carports," when you came in for this parking lot a few years back, I'm pretty confident this board would have said, "No." It would have said, "It's not allowed under our bylaw." And another thing is, is you're, part of this is in a residential zoning district. So I have a problem with the commercial use of this in a residential zoning district as well, the overall project. But I think you need variance relief. I won't go back and forth and argue with you. If what we could do right now is we could just turn this over for questions from the board, but I'm just suggesting that if we go forward tonight and you don't have, now, you could come back and argue the variance relief and maybe is successful on that. But I don't think, as your petition is presented, to modify an existing... But I don't think as your petition is presented to modify an existing special permit, I don't think you qualify. But others may differ.
Yeah, that's, that's fair and I understand what you're saying. I I would like to just touch on what Attorney Krampus was saying on the Dover amendment and why this would qualify. The D O E R has found that parking is a secondary structure or I'm sorry, these canopies over parking is exactly what the the state law was intended to do. And it was made clear by their incentivizing during, in their smart program to add more canopies over these very parking lots. And in a lot of hearings I've had in other parts of the Cape and with the Cape Cod Commission, it's been clear that that the Cape Cod Commission and other bodies here on the Cape want to encourage this type of development and stop the ground mounted solar that you're suggesting.
Well, I I appreciate all that, but our bylaw doesn't allow that.
Okay, understood.
Now, you also have a commercial use that runs into a residential district. Are you saying that the Dover amendment protects you from that, too?
Yes.
Constructing solar panels for a commercial use that runs into a residential district?
Yes, I don't think your bylaw limits solar use to any particular districts.
Are you familiar with the Briggsby Zoning Board of Appeals of Marion?
No, I'm not.
Well, that talks about how commercial solar farms go into, they can't be, they they can be restricted in residential districts.
I think here they are not so restricted under your bylaw.
I'm saying they can be prohibited. Commercial, commercial solar arrays. Solar arrays for commercial use, and I would say this is for commercial use because you're using it for the hospital, can be prohibited in residential districts. Now, you run into an R 25 district, so you're in a residential district.
Yes, I think here the Yarmouth zoning bylaw does not limit the use of solar to any particular zoning districts. It is allowed in all zoning districts. It's not, it's not prohibited in the R 25 district. And furthermore, there has to be a balancing act. You have to weigh the public interest and the health and welfare against the the clear legislative intent to have solar and allow this by right. And so without any municipal concern with this project extending into this R 25 zoning district, I I think it would be an unreasonable regulation, especially where your bylaw doesn't prohibit it in the R 25 district for you to hold that it's not allowed in that just because that's a residential district.
Well, I think that's our determination, isn't it? Whether it's some type of detriment to the public safety, health, safety and welfare.
Yeah.
Whether these are allowed in a commercial district or that they can coexist together.
It's not a commercial or residential use. It is a solar use.
I understand it's a commercial solar use in a residential district. You're not all in the B 1. You're in the R 25.
Yeah.
So those are the two issues that I have. You want us to go forward tonight? We can do that.
Sure, I just want to.
But I I will say another thing, too, that I would really not be prepared to grant any relief until I see a memo from the Board of Health. Because I read Carl Lawson's memo and he has some concerns.
He does. Yes, I agree with you and we are working with him and we will.
What if we granted relief hypothetically and he came back and said, well, geez, if any of the spills that could run into the residential areas it could be a threat to the public safety? I don't know. I haven't seen his, I did see that there's a lot of toxic materials or hazardous materials, I'll say. I'm not saying they're going to escape. I understand how one of these works. If you break one open, then you might be exposed. Okay, I'm not saying we're going to have some problem here. But we generally like to see a Board of Health memo before we proceed.
I think here you do have the safeguard. Obviously, if Carl Lawson is not satisfied with this project, he's not going to issue the requisite license for it and we will not be proceeding under the Board of Health regulations.
Okay. Does anybody have any que, Dick, do you have any questions?
Let's not be on what you've brought up. Some legitimate, legitimate concerns and I I guess I would also concur that waiting for the everything to be done with the Health Department may make more sense before we take any action. And I guess, yeah, I never really thought of the whole carport thing, but how that, how that applies here, but I guess it does.
Jay?
I do have a couple of questions. The carport thing I hadn't thought of either, but it's this, this is for the use only of the hospital. Is that the purpose of the arrays?
The solar?
Yes.
The solar is going to be stored in the battery storage containers and sent to the grid, I believe, during.
It's to serve the hospital. Hospital issued the RFP. The way this works is these are going to go directly to the grid. There's no underground line that serves the hospital directly.
It just goes into the grid and they pull their, they pull their out.
It's an offset.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all.
So this isn't even for the benefit of the hospital?
It certainly is for the benefit of the hospital. I'm just saying there's not a direct line behind their meter. It's a, it's, there's.
How is the hospital benefit from it? And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to.
All of them, right?
It's, it's a, it's a credit system.
It's a credit system. How it works, okay. I'm sorry, Jay, go ahead.
Okay, so, so it's not directly linked at all because my, one of my questions was, why do you need to put the batteries where they're going, where you're putting them? I was, I was thinking that if it was directly, it would make more sense to put the batteries in a location which was off of this property. So that was, that was just something I was thinking of because I do have a problem with doing anything before the conservation and Health Department take, take, make work on there. So that's something I would have objection to, too. So, but had you thought about doing that? But if it's not, they have to have a direct line?
The battery needs to be connected to the solar. So I'm not sure what off-site property we could consider. It'd have to be contiguous and owned by the hospital and.
Exactly.
Sounds like it might create more problems than where we have it located currently, which is in the center of the parcel off the Water Protection District and fairly far as far as this project is concerned from the wetland. So we think it's in a more or less innocuous area. And, you know, these are lithium ion batteries, so these are the same batteries that are going to be in an electric vehicle. This is a parking lot, so it's not dissimilar to the technology that's already present on.
So that goes to the problems that you can have with lithium ion batteries, which, you know, they can be flammable if something happens. And then obviously the fire department gets involved and whatever concerns that the conservation would have. So that's why I have concerns about moving forward with some of those things. I was looking at moving it someplace that would be less, less obstructive to to the, to the wetlands, which aren't that far away from where you're planning on putting these.
The Conservation Commission did not rule that this was in their jurisdiction or wanted to to further deliberate on it. So it's Board of Health is who we're mostly dealing with ongoing.
And well, that's why without Health Department support, I I have a problem with even going forward. So that, that's one of my things. I'm more on the battery side and the inverters. I just saw you had pictures of it. I was looking for pictures and I went through everything and I first of all, I didn't see the, the pictures that were there. So I apologize for that. The other question I had is lighting underneath these structures. How is the lighting going to work in those? Because I know there are poles in between some now to make sure there's proper lighting throughout the parking area. What lighting is going to be available under these structures?
Sure, so we did provide a photometric plan. The hospitals worked very close with us to make sure that their employees are going to feel safe. And then we are not going to have any light pollution, more so than currently exists off the site due to the, the lights under it. But there are LED lights that are placed, you know, directly under the structures.
I was trying to see it. I apologize if I couldn't interpret that, but.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to see Brian Yurgation, I'm sure can pull up the photometrics plan if you're curious.
If you wouldn't mind just quickly going over that, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
A lot of dots.
Hi, screen sharing. Good, for the record, my name is Brian Yurgation, professional engineer with BSC Group. But my screen share is disabled.
Okay.
By now.
Thank you. I think that worked. So what we're looking at here is the site plan. And so there are basically three different, four different lights. If you see this legend in the lower right corner, the canopy lighting that are proposed are these symbols here. There are 51 of them. And, you know, just as, as you look, you can see like for this canopy, there'll be two, two canopy lights here, two up here. There are existing light poles that are going to be removed and replaced in some instances. Those are shown with the single head mast fixture. And then there are also some double headed fixtures as well that are going to be proposed in the center of the parking lot. And so we just, you know, we tried several different iterations until we got the right wattages that so that everything complied and we have zero point, less than 0.05 foot candles at the property line. And as Ms. Campus said, it's in full compliance with the photometric standards of the town.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know what, if there were anything more and specifically that you wanted me to show you, I'd be happy to.
I was just trying to understand it because I knew there were poles there and just understanding where you're going to put the lighting with the new structures.
Sure, exactly. Like, for example, if you can see canopy one here, let me make it a little bit bigger. So there are, there are existing light poles that exist on these islands and we're proposing that we're going to, because of the proximity, you know, with the trees and the canopies, it just made much more sense to permanently remove those or, or light poles in similar situations and opt to go with the canopy mounted fixtures instead. So that's what we've done here. You can see the same thing exists on canopy four, where there's a bunch of existing light poles that are going to be removed and the canopy lighting installed in their place.
That's the primary approach is to remove the poles and put the, the lighting underneath the canopy.
Only where, only where it's helpful to, you know, facilitate the installation of the canopies and where space is very limited because of either trees and or proximity to canopy. So, yes.
Okay, um, thank you very much. Let's see. I think those are all my questions. You know, I am concerned about the Health, the Health Department and placing hazardous materials on the site without, without their, their input, so.
It's okay. Megan?
I don't really have any questions. I, I was under the impression that the primary structure on the property was the structure located at Bayview and Main Street, which I know is owned by Cape Cod Healthcare. I think it used to be the philanthropy office. I don't, I respect everyone's opinion on the board. I don't really have the same concerns. I think the overall goal really is to reduce our energy use. And that's just my understanding, living in 2022. With that said, I know they have to meet certain criteria for the board, so I think moving forward, if you meet that criteria, I personally think it's an excellent idea. The parking lot already exists. People are already parking there. And it seems to me that the carport simply builds on something that's already existing and gives it dual use as a benefit. And, and I also don't think it's unusual for carports like this that have solar on them to go to the grid. It's kind of normal, isn't it, that the energy goes to the grid? And Cape Cod Hospital will benefit from that as well as the local community benefits from it. That's just my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more question. If it's going to the grid, what's the purpose of the batteries?
So the, the state of Massachusetts now requires battery storage for all systems over 500 kilowatts. Purpose for that is the more solar we get during the daytime, the more we hit something called grid parity and we need to shift that load to the nighttime. So those batteries offload when the sun's not shining, so we can have more continuous.
So they help balance out the flow?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. Anything else from you, too? Would you like to add anything else to our discussion?
Yeah, I would just say we hear your concerns, especially with respect to the Board of Health. And I think it does make sense to continue it and we'll work with them in the interim and get you guys a memorandum from them to put you more at comfort. So if you are obliged, we would be requesting a continuance. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Mike Boxine would like to speak.
Sure. Right here. Hi, I'm Mike Boxine, the Vice President of Cape Cod Hospital. I'm also the Vice President of, of the, the system. I oversee all the construction of the hospital and about seven different divisions at the hospital for operations. I appreciate the lively conversation we had tonight and I work closely with the town Yarmouth and other projects we do on the campus. We have this great relationship over time. I want to make sure that all the questions that came tonight, I, they're all very good. I reviewed some of the memorandums from the town, especially the Board of Health, and I do understand your concerns about that. It's been brought up with battery storage now over the last couple of years as this has advanced. I think even the Barnstable High School and things like that have considered this and we've seen it. And so as a, your, your public hospital here serving the town, we want to make sure we comply with everything you're concerned with. We'll make sure we get it with the Board of Health and everything else and spend the time that we need working together to make sure at the end of the day, if this project does happen, it's mutually acceptable to everybody. To benefit for us, for the hospital, of course. And we want to make sure it's a benefit for the town and for especially our staff at the site. Thank you.
Thank you. So counsel, you're looking for a date for continuance?
Yes, please.
May 26th, okay. All right, do we have a motion to continue the matter till May 26th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Actually, I'm supposed to have a roll call. Vote on.
Do we have a public, public input? Did you want to go?
Well, there's no one in the, well, I tell you what I'm going to do. I am going to do that because we're, we're zooming as well.
Yeah.
Does anybody have their hand raised? Online? None? See no one else in the audience? I presume there's no one who wants to speak either in favor or against? Unless Attorney Cox has some comments she wants to make. Seeing none? Okay. So we will. How do you say for continuance, Megan? Aye or aye? Jay?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so we vote unanimously to continue this matter until May 26th.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Yep, you can just do that. Appreciate it. Sorry. Thank you.
And some minutes, I guess.
Make a motion.
Oh, there you go, Jay. Go ahead. You're all.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for March 10th and February 24th.
Second that.
Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where's this go? I don't have to sign this anywhere, right? Sign this? We're under, we're.
Aside from that, do we make a?
We are, we don't have to make a motion. We're adjourned. Yeah, can we?
Motion made, seconded and accepted, right?